Recording in progress.
Just checking the audio online, thanks. Hello, hello, hello.
Audio sounds good on Zoom? Are you able to hear me?
Testing, testing. Yeah, maybe, maybe slightly, but that should be fine. Check, check, check.
Who?
The TVs are all turned off.
Who wants to check?
Oh, it's always good to check.
Oh, yeah. I know.
Check, check, check.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for attending our meeting tonight. I'm going to call tonight's committee of the whole meeting to order. My name is councillor Andrew Appleton. I am chairing tonight's committee of the whole meeting. For those who haven't, we have not actually held a committee of the whole meeting for a number of months. But for those who are out of practice, the acting mayors will take it in turns to chair the committee of the whole meetings when it's their turn. It is my time as acting mayor, so I am chairing this meeting in place of Kevin Murdock. We will, however, just for those following the agenda, the committee of the whole has one agenda item on it. I suspect some people may be here for items that are on the special council meeting agenda. We will adjourn briefly between the committee of the whole and the special council meeting. Mayor Murdock will regain the chair at that time. So proceeding forward, I will just do the land acknowledgement. I'm acknowledging that the land on which we gather and the district of Oak Bay is the traditional and unceded territory of the coast and strait Salish peoples, particularly the Lakwangan-speaking people, the Songhees, and Esquimalter, Kusupsum nations, and they have a historic connection to these lands and waters that continues to this day. So we give thanks for our ability to host this meeting and all of the benefits that accrue from living in this part of the world. Secondly, I will call for approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve, moved and seconded? Comments, concerns? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Unopposed? None opposed. So we have two sets of minutes to adopt. The committee of the whole minutes of April, or sorry, the town hall minutes of April the 24th, and the committee of the whole minutes of June the 16th. Move them together? Moved? May I have a second or seconded? Any edits or corrections to the minutes? Councillor Watson?
Just to come, they weren't actually attached to the agenda, so, or mine, they weren't attached to the agenda that I downloaded.
Oh, okay. Well, then I will, if council has not had the opportunity to review the minutes, I will then, I guess, request of staff, is, should they, should the approval be deferred until such time as folks have had the privilege? I'm seeing nods, okay. So then I will not ask for, I will not complete the motion to approve those two sets of minutes. Just for clarity, I will assume that then, they will then come up on a future committee of the whole meeting agenda? Seeing nods, okay, so those will be approved at a future committee of the whole. Thank you very much. Then moving on to mayor and council verbal reports. We have not, as I mentioned, we have not hosted a committee of the whole meeting for quite some time, back in the summertime, in fact. Before, well, I guess July would be the last one. So we have, generally, mayor and council will provide verbal reports at committee of the whole meetings. It's been an extended period of time, so, and all of members of council are very busy, so there will be a lot of ground to cover. I guess I would ask council to give us the highlights, give us the best parts, your greatest hits of the last couple of months, and we'll, we'll go from there in the interests of time. I know everybody has had lots of meetings and has attended many events on behalf of the district in the last little while. So for order this time, we will go for no particular reason in alphabetical order, so I will start with councillor Braithwaite.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Oh, is my mic on? Yes?
Yep.
Okay, good. I just can't hear myself. I actually will, with your indulgence, I'd just like to take a moment to highlight, instead of doing my regular report, I'd just like to highlight two exceptional youth leaders from our community, both of whom have been recognized through the Young Exceptional Star Awards, which the district of Oak Bay has proudly supported since their inception in 2008. The first is Liam Pope-Lau, who received a YES Award in 2023 in recognition of his leadership and contributions to our community. He invented Life Heat, a self-heating life jacket, which, and this was when he was in middle school. And it's a, that jacket brought him recognition both provincially and federally. Since then, I've followed his journey with admiration as he has continued to demonstrate extraordinary dedication, innovation, and impact in the field of ocean and climate advocacy. Liam has led youth-driven initiatives such as advocating for single-use plastic span in British Columbia, contributing to a federal national plastic strategy and engaging ocean conservation education at schools, museums, and public events. He was recently recognized as the Canadian winner of the National Youth Climate Activism Award in 2024, and his first prize winner in the Blue Ocean International Competition, testament to both his expertise and his ability to inspire action. Most recently, he was appointed to the World Ocean Day Youth Advisory Council for 2025-2026. He was chosen from over 550 applicants across 101 countries to represent Canada on this global stage. So truly, Liam continues to make our community proud. The second individual I want to highlight is Sophie DeGudie, a YES Award recipient in 2015. Sophie was recognized not only for her athletic excellence at Oak Bay High School, but also for her leadership academically. Many of you may know that Sophie captained Canada to the Women's Rugby World Cup final, an historic match in our nation's sporting history. While Canada finished second to England, Sophie's leadership on the field was exemplary. To add to her remarkable achievements, she was named World Rugby Women's Player of the Year for 2025, further demonstrating the caliber of youth leadership that has emerged from our community. So Chair, I just simply want to congratulate Liam and Sophie for their extraordinary achievements and for being shining examples of the kind of leadership, dedication, and innovation that the Young Exceptional Star Awards were created to recognize. They are making a difference not only in Oak Bay, but on the national and international stage. And I know I speak for all of council when I celebrate them today. Thank you.
Thank you so much, councillor Braithwaite, and I really appreciate those comments. Having been involved with councillor Braithwaite in organizing the YES Awards in the past, we've seen some truly exceptional people. I really appreciate you acknowledging them, and I will also acknowledge you, councillor Braithwaite, for all the hard work that you put into the YES Awards as well, so thank you very much for that. Thank you. Councillor Green?
Thank you, Chair. Excuse me, I have a frog in my throat. Since August, since August the break, the August break, I have attended the South Island Regional Advisory Committee, which has to do with treaty relationships with First Nations on the South Island. I've attended two GVLRa meetings, a Regional Water Supply Commission meeting as your Oak Bay Commissioner, and the Tourism Committee, and then all of us attended the Union of British Columbia Municipalities Conference, which was held in Victoria this year in September. So I'm going to keep it brief. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Green. Brief and to the point. Thank you very much. Mayor Murdock?
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of mayors' remarks in there. Get to do weekly updates on them, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Murdock. Councillor Patterson?
Thank you, Chair, and I probably attended all the events that everybody else will talk about, so I will not speak about them. But September 17th, just prior to the UBCM conference, I attended a full-day session of strategic planning and board meetings at CREST, the Capital Region Emergency Services Telecommunications. And I am very pleased to say that we held our, that meeting in our new building at City Gates in Langford. We're going to complete migration to the new building and master site later this month. So that was a big event, certainly for, for myself and the board, all the participants. And our strategic planning was focused on what our four primary accountable goals are with defined performance measures, effective governance and stakeholder relations, public safety and service excellence, organizational effectiveness, and financial performance and sustainability. And the last item, I got to facilitate, so I didn't find out about that until I arrived at the meeting and found it on, found it on the memo. But nevertheless, we, we had good discussions all around. September 23rd, in coordination with the UBCM conference, I attended as the liaison to municipal insurance association's annual general meeting. And so it's in great shape. The minimum capital test ratio is 448%. And considering the provincial guideline is only 335, we are in very good shape financially to serve our 100-plus members, which are mostly small communities like Oak Bay, and to provide insurance coverage now for over $13.5 billion in local government assets. The membership this year approved eight special resolutions at its AGM. Four of relevance to Oak Bay include added coverage for recycling facilities, off-premises EV charging stations, automatic coverage for newly acquired property or assets under construction, and updated errors and omissions clauses to address unintentional inaccuracies on statement, which can happen when, if you're doing a lot of construction or new development. We also, in response to the demand from our membership, have opened a new portal on the MIA's website with a link to Community Events Framework Risk Assessment as the small communities across this province now attempt to deal with. attempt to deal with increasing liability and insurance costs for public events that are held in the community. The events are really important to all small communities across the province. But since the incident last year, the tragic incident in Vancouver, the ability to secure reasonably priced insurance is, is a challenge for the communities. So we're glad to do that and, and to monitor the risk assessment going forward. And then on October 9th, I participated in the Victoria Family Court Youth Justice Steering Committee meeting. And I will be presenting the 2026 draft budget to the committee on October 23rd, which is to be my last meeting on that body. And hopefully recruitment is underway for a new representative. So, and that is all that I will talk about. That's enough in those three items. And turn it back to you Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Patterson. And just extending my thanks and the thanks of council for the work that you do on some very specialized boards and committees, external organizations that council really benefits from. I know that I ran into Councilor Patterson at UBCM as she was on her way to spend a good chunk of a day at the municipal insurance. And there was a lot of work to be done. So extending my thanks and the thanks of council, Councilor Patterson, thank you. Councilor Smart.
Thank you. In addition to my roles on the Heritage Commission and the Arts Commission and liaison to UVIC and Kemosen, I've also been busy, in addition to UBCM, I attended the Rent Conference this year to learn a lot about what's happening in our nonprofit and housing sector. I also attended with much of council, the two community-led sessions on long-term care that we had in the, the community. And also the recent event with Councilor Watson for South Island Prosperity Partnership on the new possibility economy framework that came out, which was really enlightening. And I also recently attended the two most recent Chamber Connectors events, particularly the one that featured Oak Bay Volunteer Services and had a chance to connect with that group. And as with everyone else, really enjoyed so many opportunities to have one-on-one conversations with members of our community at our official community plan engagement.
Thank you, Councilor Smart. Councilor Watson.
Yeah, I'll be, thank you, I'll be ultra-brief. I just wanted to mention specifically and give thanks to the Accessibility Advisory Committee. I met with, they met during UBCM council's behest in order to review the OCP and the land use framework. And that was really heavy lifting. That was a really intense meeting over more than a morning. And yeah, I just want to publicly thank them for the time they put into looking at that material, which is a little out of kind of scope of the sort of things that they would usually look at. In addition to that, the usual, I, I, I sit as a council liaison to the ADP. It's met a couple of times since we last had a Committee of the Whole. And yeah, we've been, as you hear from all the councillors, very active in participating and observing the community participate in events around the development of our, of our proposed OCP, which needs to be put to bed before the end of the year. Thank you, that's everything.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor Watson. Just for my own part, I will be very brief, but there is one important thing that I want to acknowledge on behalf of council. Council will recall that during my tenure as Chair of the Greater Victoria Public Library Board, that I brought forward a motion through this council to take to the Union of BC Municipalities Conference, calling on the province for additional library funding. And council supported that motion, very grateful for that. Since that time, both during my tenure as Chair and subsequent to that, I've worked with our colleagues at the Vancouver Island Regional Library to sort of keep the visibility on that topic of additional funding for libraries. And that, that initial approach and that initial motion that came through this council was sort of the impetus for that. Those who attended UBCM this year will have seen that the subject was very much at the forefront of discussion and actually made it to be a special resolution at the UBCM conference, which was passed to endorse that additional funding. And there is a direct line between this council's support of that motion and that, that request at UBCM to that special resolution. So I was very pleased to see that special resolution pass. Again, also for those who are at UBCM, you will see that there was a question put directly to the premier with respect to additional library funding. With the, you know, the state of the, of the provincial budget, that is something that the premier was fairly direct, that that was something that was not available at this time. Nevertheless, the advocacy has been strong and consistent. And I have always felt well-supported by this council and this community and moving forward to keep on requesting those funds. And so we will keep our foot on the gas on that subject and will continue to advocate for that funding for public libraries, knowing how significant they are in the community. But I just wanted to extend my thanks to council for supporting that initial motion because it has made it all the way up to the highest levels at UBCM and was endorsed by the entirety of the, of the membership. So I, I would thank you directly for that. And it was a very engaging and a very positive UBCM, if, if not from the monetary side, but for the visibility for the significance of public libraries, which is something that I'm very passionate about. So thank you very much. I will move on to item five on the agenda, which is the public comment and question period. So I will just mention to folks that are in attendance, we will, we're having our usual public input period. We're speaking to items that are not on the agenda. I think some folks may be here to attend and listen to the debate on items which are on the special council agenda. Most of those items are not actually open for public input. So that means that they are not open for public input in this forum either. So we are, we are limited on the types of public input we can receive, especially on land use applications. So just remind members of the public, you can speak to subjects which are not on the agenda, but we're not taking public input on items which are on the special council meeting, most of which are not open to input in any case. So that sounds fairly closed, but I absolutely encourage folks who have something to speak with council about, to please come forward. We have 30 minutes allocated and happy to hear from any member of the public who wants to speak on one of those, and any other subject. Please come forward. Very good. So for those who have not done this before, or those who are out of practice, we do ask that you give your name and your municipality of residence. And then you have three minutes to speak.
Thank you, Councilor Appleton. Mayor and council, thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk tonight. My name is Leona Fernet and I live at 3142 Woodburn Avenue. I'm here tonight because of the changes that I'm seeing in my neighborhood. And they're rippling through Oak Bay. And that is the lack of, what we have been committed to for a number of years, which is gentle densification. I think, is this not? Is that better? Because I can really throw my voice if I need to. I'm here to represent the 200-plus people that follow my website with respect to projects that are coming up in the Upper Henderson area. And we've got concerns that we don't seem to have any clear policy on what fourplexes are allowed to do. You know, the shock of the St. Patrick's triplex that was built there has literally destroyed the little cottage that was extensively renovated to period by the Rubin family. Now we've seen a fourplex go up on Cadbro Bay Road where there was Phil brought in that brought that property up almost an entire story. So now it leers over its neighbors. And we're going to start getting requests for changes to the OCP and bylaw and variances with respect to people wanting to do more than four. And I think that, and, and a lot of the people on, that speak to me through the website is that that is a huge concern because that will ripple throughout the community. And that, you know, we have, we have, we have a community, an OCP. We're doing a new one. We shouldn't be looking at anything, although I know it's the right of the developer to do that. We shouldn't be entertaining that kind of decision at all. And I'd like to applaud Councilor Watson for something she said with respect to the property subdivision at 3322 Henderson, which was the corner lot. You, you, at that council meeting, you agreed to allow subdivision of two properties, but you did not give that homeowner the opportunity to subdivide because it's been identified that these corner lots in Upper Henderson are very, very valuable for fourplexes. And I think that I was buoyed to hear that because there is, there is in the neighborhood the idea that staff are cheerleaders for any kind of densification. And I don't say that to disrespect staff, but that's what the public is seeing. And that, oh, just lost my train of thought there. And, and that we need to be really mindful not only of the densification, but the impact on the, the canopy. You know, the properties up in Upper Henderson are large. Many of them have significant Gary Oak trees on them. And those of us who are fortunate to live up there, we spend a lot of time and money and effort keeping those trees going because they are our protection. And to see them fall for the sake of densification, which I'm not convinced will, will meet targets and nor do I think the targets are real. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fernet. Yes, sir, please come forward. So again, name and municipality of residence and three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bernard Bild. I've been living in the Oak Bay area for 43 years. When we moved to the area, we never thought that the developments are taking place, would ever take place. And we ever, and we always thought that there was some kind of communication between individuals living in the area and those that ruled basically and council. One of the things that has happened over the years is that there has been increases in population. We have seen tremendous congestion in Fowl Bay, a determination of sessions. When Kemosen College studies end for the day, and the same thing for the University of, University of Victoria. Fowl Bay is literally impassable. There are safety concerns that we have, noise concerns that we have. The construction that is going on right now and properties that are very narrow and deep mandate that these multi-dwelling structures be constructed in such a way, such that, such that the, the, the side of the, of the dwelling now faces the street, which is how, you know, very unsightly. Neighbors in where I live feel that developers are being given the green light just to build, simply to placate a densification decree by government. I don't think there's enough control here. The canopy of trees, I don't even have the right to trim a single branch of the Gary Oak on my property without getting a permit. And we're getting the impression that you're going to go in there and just raise trees to the ground without our consent. So I've always thought that there is informing consent and there is no consent here. I think that the trees need to be protected. Some of them age, they have to be trimmed, the city has to maintain them, but we don't have a right to do any of that. So I feel that there is this, this concept of do as I say, not do as I do, which really has to change. It's a, it's a philosophy that is not really democratic and it doesn't involve the community. But the indiscriminate building of dwellings only to satisfy a government decree because a population increases, this has to be really studied very, very carefully. The biggest problem to this is, the source is immigration policies, which started at the federal level, which trickle down to the provincial level and now to the civic level, that tends to impact communities that are quiet, that have always been quiet and very pleasant. And we're seeing this being destroyed. Henderson is one, Fowl Bay is another one. There are two major developments on Fowl Bay near, approaching the university, which are absolutely hideous. And now what is going to happen on Lansdowne is even worse, 13 units. My concern as well is this, if we're already seeing congestion along Kemosen College, you're going to build a 400-unit dorm for students where enrollment is dropping. I cannot see who is-
Right of order, just, we can't hear any, any discussion about, we have, we've had a public hearing-
Okay, so it, it, what, what is happening in my view is that if this is going to go forward, then there's going to be congestion beyond measure in that area. There's a safety concern in my view, the noise, infrastructure which is not there, so sustain it. And then you're going to build all these other dwellings around it that are changing our neighborhoods. And we would like to have a little bit more say in this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, Your Worship. Yes, sir, please come forward. I think that, I think the routine is fairly well-traveled, but we'll just get your name and municipality of residence and then your three minutes-
Yes, my name is Peter DeGroot. I live at 3561 Redwood Avenue. And I'm not sure that I'm allowed to speak because I wish to speak with regards to the development of 2298 Lansdowne. If I'm not, then I'd say-
No, unfortunately you cannot, Mr. DeGroot, I'm sorry.
That's fine, then I go and thank you.
Oh.
Hope I have an opportunity to speak to this matter at another time.
Well, it will be, we will describe, the Chair will describe the process for engagement at that time, Mr. DeGroot. And thank you very much, it's always a pleasure to see you. Anybody else wish to address council? Again, on items which are not on the agenda. Seeing none in the room. Staff is not giving me the high sign for hands online, I'm not seeing any. Last call. Seeing none, I will move on. Thank you very much for those who gave their input. We have a single item on the agenda for Committee of the Whole tonight, under item six. This is short-term rentals program options. Mr. Bowle, I believe you're kicking things off.
Thank you Chair. I'm joined by Rob Lads, Senior Biological Place Official, and also Richard Reynolds Online, our consultant on this. Would you have a presentation available if the Chair has the time and an interest?
Yeah, I, I have reviewed the presentation. I think it's a good summary of where we're at, given we have a number of moving parts as part of this discussion and a number of different components for consideration. I would ask you to proceed, Mr. Bowle.
Thank you, I'll wait for it to come on, on screen, on screen, and then Ms. Reynolds will walk us through the presentation.
And I will officially welcome Ms. Reynolds to the meeting. Thank you very much for your attendance.
Good evening, committee members. Okay, so it looks like we're ready, so I will just proceed, if that's okay?
Yes, please proceed, we can see your presentation now.
So what you've got on this slide is now just briefly the couple of resolutions from council directing staff. So the first resolution was from the June 23rd, asking that staff prioritize the bylaw review for short-term rentals. And then we did the presentation and staff report for September 8th. And the, the second resolution was, was seeking some further clarification or options for council's consideration. And that's what we're presenting today. Next slide. What I've got, this slide just lists the various elements that we'll be talking about briefly with each of the options on today's presentation. So next slide, please. So this is the option. Option A was the option that really resembled the, the program that we presented at the previous committee meeting. And it also is more closely aligned with the provincial regulations because it allows both tenants and owners of secondary suites to, both tenants and owners of secondary suites to, secondary suites and detached ADUs to operate a short-term rental in those units. This option recommends a maximum of, or permits, or, sorry, recommends a maximum of one short-term rental per dwelling unit, and again, aligned with the provincial regulations. So that could in fact mean up to two short-term rentals on one property, in the primary dwelling and the, a secondary suite, for example. This would also require safety inspection, and this was, came from recommendation from building and fire inspection staff. Maximum number of nights or days would be ninety days, again, aligned with the province. A recommendation to require landlord and strata corporation endorsement or permissions for tenants or owners living in strata developments. And then a business license fee that would be up to, you know, similar to the commercial rates, but to a maximum of a hundred dollars per year. Next slide, please. The second option, option B, next slide, please, is, this is from staff's recommendation. If you, go back to option B, please. Is the staff recommendation, and this somewhat simplifies the, the first option in terms of foregoing the safety inspections, but that would be done, self-reporting, safety check would be required with the building license, or sorry, business license application. And in this option would require owner or landlord and strata sign-off, and it would also consider as a maximum of a hundred and sixty days or night stays, and this is reflective of some of the comments we received with the last, when we met last time in September. And this would allow for residents in a, any residents that's a principal residence could be used as a short-term rental. So that would be whether it's the primary dwelling, the main dwelling unit, or a detached ADU or suite. But that would be one maximum, one short-term rental maximum per property. And this, we see this as a bit more of an equitable approach because it does allow tenants to operate short-term rentals. And here, the, the post-business license fleet fee would be a flat fee of a hundred dollars, which is aligned with the sort of commercial business license fees. And then the third option is probably the most sort of minimalist approach, allowing short-term rentals only in accessory or primary dwelling units and, or primary dwelling units that are principal residences. So this would exclude then secondary suites or detached accessory dwelling units from the program. No safety check, whether done by staff or by self-reporting would be required, and the least number of days are suggested with this option at, up to thirty days. And then the business license fee is aligned with what is charged for home-based business at fifty dollars. This, next slide, please. The, there's a couple of elements that I didn't touch on. Two of them, we are seeking committee and council's direction as it relates to signage. Currently, home-based business regulation doesn't permit signs. And, I mean, typically when signs are permitted as part of a short-term rental or a home-based business, they're typically small and no lighting is, is permitted. You know, the, it does beg the question, given the nature of the business model with short-term rentals, that it's all an online activity, are signs necessary? One jurisdiction we looked at, they require signs with the contact information of the property owner or the host, or somebody that can be reached off hours, so that if there's an emergency, neighbors have somebody they know who they can call. Another element that needs some direction is relating to parking. And given the provincial directives to reduce or eliminate parking for residential uses, it appears to be inconsistent to require additional parking for short-term rentals. Short-term rentals would be deemed or are a, an accessory use, and again, they'd be permitted for a limited number of days based on, on council's direction. We are recommending that in all, whatever option, that a business license be required, and that is important because it's an important enforcement tool. You know, for example, as part of the business license requirements, emergency contact information would have to be provided so that if there are any issues, enforcement staff are able to contact that number. And the thing is also with business licenses, that they're, they're more easily enforceable, and they can be canceled either temporarily or permanently for non-compliance. And it's also the main tool that the province uses for enforcement. So as a result, we, we think that that's an important element to any, whichever auction council chooses. While we talked about it in the memo, it is not recommended to include any or restrict the number of sleeping units or bedrooms in these options. So, so that element, although previously discussed, is not part of staff's recommendation. And the reason for that is, is we're, by trying to regulate that element, it's really, we're regulating people as opposed to trying to regulate the use, which is an important distinction. Next slide, please. So again, for staff and myself and supportive staff, we're recommending the, the option B. And the reason for that one is that self-reporting for inspections, that's consistent with recommendations we got from building department and fire department staff to ensure that life safety issues are covered off. The maximum number of nights is longer, and, but that reflects the community feedback that we received. It also provides options for all residents, whether they're tenants or owners or strata owners, to be able to rent their principal residence, and so creating more of a, a level playing field. And then, as mentioned, we need some direction from staff regarding signs and parking. Alternatively, you know, there's, there's various elements for, for council that they may want to choo-, choose, you know, some element, one element from, from A and add it to B, so it can be, you know, it can be customized. And so we leave that option with you. Next slide, please. And the next steps would be based on council's direction, that staff would prepare amendments to the zoning bylaw, business license bylaw, and municipal ticket information bylaw, and the zoning bylaw approval process. Now, because the proposed amendments, they're consistent with the OCP, a public hearing isn't required. And so notice of first reason, read, reading must be given pursuant to the Local Government Act. And for the business license bylaw amendment, notification through advertising is, is required. So, and, and next, any, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Reynolds. Appreciate that presentation. Mr. Bowle, anything further to add before I ask, request questions? Okay, so just for the public's knowledge, we will seek questions from council. This is open to public input, so we will seek public input after that time, and then we'll seek motions from this table. So I will ask, I will ask council for who wishes to pose a question. So Council of Rathwaite and Council of Green, please.
Thanks so much, Chair, and through you. I do have a number of questions. So let me start with, how will we prevent STRs from operating year-round if we choose the hundred and sixty-day allowance in option B? Or can we?
Mr. Bowle, I'm not sure whether that's for you or for the consultant.
I'll start, and Ms. Reynolds is welcome to add. We didn't complain, consider that option necessarily. The idea of the number of days is throughout the year, but if there's a certain, if there's a desire to limit to a certain period in the year, or in, that's something, an additional option we would need to look at or develop. Thank you.
Sorry, just to clarify, so, so under option B, I think you have number of nights per calendar year per dwelling unit is a hundred and sixty. So my question is, how do we, how do we enforce whether that's a hundred, if, if somebody goes over that a hundred and sixty? Sorry, to, I just wanted to clarify.
Or Mr. Lads.
Through the chair, can you, yeah, there we go. Through the chair, the provincial portal posts monthly how many nights per month are rented, so we would have access to that information.
Thank you, and through you, Chair. Then how will that enforcement be carried out? Like, do we have the staff capacity to handle it? So I'm, what, what I'm hearing you say is that it's up to our staff then to count the number of days for each unit that's been rented for those, to keep track of how many days that those units are being rented.
Ms. Lads?
Through the chair, currently, the policy is to enforce on a complaint basis. So if the district were to receive a complaint, then we would follow up and do the investigation. We aren't actively proactive enforcing it.
Thank you so much, Chair. So, yeah, and, and I, from my understanding, right now, to file a complaint, you have to have two people, at least two people, file a complaint on a bylaw infraction. Is that correct?
Mr. Lads?
It depends on the, on the bylaw complaint. If it is a complaint that creates a hazard, we would act on one, but in this case, it would require two complaints.
So then we're, sorry, Chair.
Go ahead.
So then we're actually putting the expectation on to our residents to, to keep track of the number of days. Okay, I'll move on to other questions. Does this fire department support a self-reported checklist system, or is an inspection necessary to protect our liability?
Mr. Bowle?
Thank you. Through the chair, we discussed this with the fire chief, and he did not give us a strong recommendation either way. It's, it's, it has different effects, right? Self-reporting still would, we need to meet certain requirements. We would have the applicant sign off on certain elements that need to be present, or features of the, the suite that is being rented, or the house. So, yeah, as, as staff, we are comfortable with either of the options that we are providing. Thank you. Go ahead, Council of Rathwaite.
Thank you, Chair. So, yeah, so then going on that, so if we do choose option B or C, how will the district ensure basic life safety requirements are met without the inspections?
Mr. Bowle?
Thank you, through the chair. Well, I think in, in, being realistic about these options is that the first options has, has us check it in the field. The second one relies on paperwork and somebody giving guarantees on that basis. And in the third, in the third option, there's, it's a hands-off approach where it's up to the owners to take responsibility for those businesses. Thank you.
Please continue, Council of Rathwaite.
Thank you. I'll do a few more, and then I'll pass it on to one of my colleagues. What resources by law planning and fire will be required for each option to ensure compliance? Or do we know that yet?
Start with you, Mr. Bowle.
Yeah, for compliance, I think that's probably similar, let me see, as Ms. Lads, Mr. Lads was just commenting on, if there are concerns, we have, thanks to the province, direct insight in the number of nights, so that's an, an easier one to check. If there's other concerns, it depends, noise, for example, would be investigated and followed up. We have Mr. Lads available for that regardless. In terms of other staff resources, option one, sorry, A, requires the most resources because in those cases, every business license needs to be inspected. But option two has a little bit less of an impact, but still requires paperwork to be reviewed. And even in option C, that would be a review, but by less staff. So A is probably the most resource-intensive option and C the least. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowle. Council of Rathwaite.
Thank you, Chair. And my last question for now is, how will these rules apply to strata buildings and duplexes? Will strata councils retain the right to prohibit STRs?
Mr. Bowle?
Thank you. Yes, the strata councils have, have independent role for their own complexes that is separate from the district, so even if the district were to allow short-term rentals, it's still up to the strata to have their, they can have their own rules and their own ways to enforce these. Thank you.
Thank you, Council of Rathwaite. Council of Green.
Thank you, Chair. And through you to Mr. Bowle, thank you very much for the report and to the consultant as well. I have just a couple of questions. One is regarding safety checks, self-reporting safety checks. What does that actually look like in terms of practical, on-the-ground process from your department? Thank you.
Mr. Bowle?
Thank you, through the chair. That's something we need to develop further, but it would be a checklist that would likely still require a floor plan for the business, identification of exits, possibly presence of a fire extinguisher. We might go as far as cross-referencing those plans with the actual plans we have for the house in question, and, or with the goal of ensuring that, that the checkpoints that we are going to identify are met. Thank you.
Please proceed, Council.
Second question, thank you. Through you to Mr. Bowle. Mr. Bowle, I just wanted to know, was there any discussion amongst the consultant and your staff about the potential impact on long-term rental availability in Oak Bay? Particularly in the first two options, A and B. My concern would be possibly that, that those, those housing types would be unavailable now for long-term housing. And I think the whole point of the housing crisis is we provide long-term accommodation to as many people as we can, and that's the whole principle behind more densification. So I'm just wondering if that conversation was had as you were thinking about all of this. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Bowle. Oh, and to the consultant, please.
Yeah, well, I guess the, the thing with it is, is that it, it, it could potentially impact long-term rentals, and that's, I think, one of the things that council needs to, to determine if, if it's an appropriate use within the district. It, I mean, certainly the fewer numbers of nights that are rented are, they're, less likely to be as impactful to long-term rentals than if it's, people can rent out their units for longer periods. But it, it's, it is correct that, yeah, it does have the, the potential to impact long-term rentals.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to add that the province does put requirements on this, so the operators have to be principal residents, and there are certain ways the province checks that. So there is some, some limitation there, so it's, it's not possible to rent out the STR without a principal residence being, operating it. But there's the exception that, for example, secondary suites or accessory dwelling units could be operated if the principal residence is resident, sorry, is in the main dwelling. So there's, there's, yeah, the potential for impact there for sure. Yeah, thank you.
And my last question, thank you through you, Chair. Mr. Bowle, what, what is our capacity in, in bylaw enforcement? How many FTEs do we have currently? Thank you.
Mr. Bowle, or Mr. Lads?
And thank you, through the chair. We have one FTE, Mr. Lads, next, next to me here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council of Green. I have Councilors Watson, then Smart, then Mayor Murdock, and Council Patterson. Go ahead, Councilor Watson.
Thank you, Chair. It's a question to staff, and it's kind of a, how you would, how this gets monitored on a property that has, say, a secondary suite, an ADU, and of course, a home. When you add an ADU or a secondary suite, does the property have to have a separate
have a separate legal address for those additional units? I'm just wondering how you differentiate between who's in which unit when you're, when you're following, keeping track of it.
Mr. Bowle, is that clear?
Yes, thank you, through the chair. Yes, we do require addresses, separate addresses for each independent dwelling unit, including secondary suites and accessory dwelling units. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowle.
And just to follow up, and the scheme in option B, it could conceivably have actually the, the property owner living in the accessory dwelling unit and a tenant in the main house, and that would still, you'd be able to track that, and it would all be okay. All right, thanks.
I'm seeing nods from Mr. Bowle, but is that, I will take that as a yes? Very good. Anything further, Councilor Watson? Councilor Smart?
Thank you. This may be a question for the chair, or for the staff through the chair, and it's, I guess particularly towards a little bit of the process tonight. So if we go ahead with choosing an option, and potentially modifying it, I'm wondering about two specific things in the report, and whether or not they need to come as sort of separate motions later. One of those is the mention of a potential $500 deposit for bylaw enforcement, and the other one is reserving the OAP MRDT money for affordable housing. And I just, because they're not in the chart, I just wanted to know if those two things needed to be separate motions after we decide on an option. Thank you.
Just for clarity, Councilor Smart, those are not options which are included in sort of the numbered options included in the memo, those are additive to. So not being, what the, the methodology that's described in the staff report is such that either option, well, either option B or option A or C could be selected. If A or C was selected, there's a number of numbered components that could be used for the purpose of amendment. If these were additional to, if these were things that were not covered by those, those numbered motions, then I would say that those would probably be a motion arising after this particular option was selected.
Thank you. And just for clarification, and also if we were to choose option B, there'd be motions arising, yes?
Yes, thank you. Questions for staff, Councilor Smart?
I believe, oh my, the only other question I had through you, Chair, was just regards to a strata property. So I assume then it would be first come, first served, as far as, say, you had a property that was a fourplex, and it was stratted, the first person to apply for a business license would be allowed to have an STR, or they'd have to work it out themselves, and we would just totally stay out of it. I was just curious how that might play out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Smart. And Mr. Bowle?
Yeah, thank you, through the chair. Yeah, we haven't put any rules or provisions for that, but I think, yeah, realistically, that would be first come, first served. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bowle. Mayor Murdock?
Thank you, I'll be brief. Just through you, Chair, one, just want to confirm that this, the MRDT tax does kick in automatically. There's no, as we have MRDT in the, in the municipality, all the online platforms that support short-term rentals would automatically charge the MRDT tax. Is that, is that correct, through you, Chair?
I think we'll call on the consultant, Ms. Reynolds, is that correct?
I, I'm not sure. Sorry.
Mr. Bowle?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, these, these revenues are now collected through those platforms for short-term rentals, and automatically are routed to the district at some point.
Thank you, Mr. Bowle.
Great, thank you. And just, do we know, through you, just to staff or the, or the consultant, is, if we set the number of days, is, do the online platforms have the ability to incorporate our rules and, and limit the number of days per year, per, per unit? Is that, is that actually a service that they provide as, as part of their online? If you don't, if they don't know, that's, that's fine, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor Murdock. Mr. Bowle?
Yeah, through the chair, I, I don't have that information. I'm not sure if Ms. Reynolds knows about this, but I think it's more the province that keeps track of that, and that would be the way for us to, to know how many nights are being rented. Thanks.
Ms. Reynolds, anything further on that point?
Sure, through the chair, the, it, it shows on the portal, it, it displays the, the number of nights that a property is rented for. So it's, it's, so it, it wouldn't limit, it would, it doesn't limit it, but it, but it tells you how many nights that one individual property is rented for over the year period. So it's easy, it's quite easy to monitor it.
Great, thank you. And last question is just for clarification on the, there's, there's two options here, that one is that the landlord endorsement, so for example, an ADU would have the, the owner have to sign off for that to be rented, and a strata council endorsement. Are those separatable? Like, or could we do one of those and not the other? Is that, is that viable, or is if, by the nature of the, of the process here, we would essentially have to step away from requiring approval from either the strata or the landlord?
Mr. Bowle?
Thank you, through the chair. Those are, yeah, in itself, they're, they're both a bit different. So I, I think at first glance that that would be possible. Looking at Ms. Reynolds, if she has any additional insights from looking at other communities.
Go ahead, Ms. Reynolds.
Yeah, and currently, under the home-based business regulations with the district, landlord permission is required. So, but it, but not, there's no mention of strata. So, yeah, I think separating them is, is not an issue.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor Murdock. I have Councilor Patterson, and then I'll go for second time speaker.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and through you to Director Bowle. Just, the, we, we have talked about some of the issues related to enforcement and inspections, and, and some of these costs. And I'm just wondering if either our staff or our consultant can give us any, any guidelines as to what other communities are, are allowing for expense budgets for either enforcement, inspections, securing fine revenues, because that would fall on the district to also litigate. So do we have any experience comparisons to, to help us gauge the costs of, around these programs?
I'll, I'll go to Mr. Bowle, and then if you wish to refer to the consultant as well, Mr. Bowle.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to ask a consultant too, and she, she completed a review, and might have gleaned information on that basis.
Please proceed, Ms. Reynolds.
Sure, thank you. And I, I would have to go back and take a closer look at what different jurisdictions are doing, but certainly a number of jurisdictions that currently don't have a problem, a program, that was one of the things that they were wanting to evaluate, what the, the resource implications would be. And as I think it was Councilor Smart mentioned, I think it's Miss Chosen, they opted to require a $500 sort of security deposit from applicants, so that if there were calls, enforcement calls, that, that there would be those funds that could be drawn on to, to bolster staffing resources. So that was one method that, that has been used.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Go ahead, Councilor Patterson.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And just as a follow-up to that, thank you very much for that information. And so with those deposits, are they kept in perpetuity? Or are they, if, if there's a good record, are they, are they refundable to the units after a certain period of time? And, or just held in reserve funds? What happens to the, the accounts?
Go ahead, Ms. Reynolds, if you have that information.
Yeah, my understanding is that, for example, it would be collected with the initial application, and I think it would be, and if they, if the applicant didn't renew for the next, the next year, for example, then they would be refunded their, their security deposit, providing, providing it wasn't drawn upon. So it wouldn't be held in perpetuity, but it would be done, yeah, over more of an annual basis, but collected with the initial application, the initial business license application.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Thank you, Councilor Patterson. I have no questions at this time, so I'll go to second time speakers, Councilor Braithwaite.
Thank you, I'll be very brief. It's just a follow-up on a question that Councilor Green asked, and that was in regards to the number of bylaw officers we currently have. So my question would be, will we need a software update to help with this, or an, an additional bylaw officer to monitor the STRs?
Mr. Bowle, or Mr. Letts?
Thank you, through the chair. I don't think we are planning any updates to our software. We are relying on the province portal to, to get information. Yeah, we were just talking about how many complaints have been investigated, but it's part of a bigger picture, right? So Mr. Letts did mention that, since the provincial changes were made to short-term rentals, we investigated five complaints, so that'd be over two years by now, or, yeah, about two years. And I think our total complaint volume is about...
Was it another year?
Yeah.
We're on track for about 250 this year.
So the total this year is about 250. So it shows that it's, it has been a minor amount in comparison to the total. So in that sense, we don't, do not anticipate that this would require additional resources just for the short-term rental program. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bowle. Council.
Thank you, Chair. And then so, so Ms. Reynolds had mentioned that it would be easy to monitor from the provincial website, but I'm still assuming that if our staff don't monitor it, then, then it's not getting monitored unless we're going to go on a by complaint basis.
Mr. Bowle, or Mr. Letts?
Yeah, thank you. If, if there is a desire from council to actively monitor this particular type of business license, then that could be set up, but it would be, it would make it stand apart a bit in, in the overall approach to bylaw compliance in, in the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowle. Anything further, Councilor Braithwaite?
Seeing no other questions from council at this time, then I will open this up to public input. So this is subject to public input. So are there any folks who wish to speak to short-term rentals program options? I see online, Mr. Taddy. Mr. Taddy, you're free to unmute and just give your name and your municipality of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hello, Tim Taddy, Oak Bay, and thank you for this opportunity. I'll be quick. Through you, Chair, I just have a staff question first. If, under option B, if I were to own a home with a in-law suite in the basement, or a separate suite in the basement, and I live on the main floor, in option B, I'm assuming that I would be allowed to operate a short-term rental in that suite for 160 days. Am I correct?
I believe that is the case, Mr. Taddy, but I will confirm with staff. Just one second.
Mr. Bowle?
Thank you, Chair, that's correct.
That is correct, Mr.
Then I just have a comment to make. It, it seems to me that, from my perspective, we haven't moved at all on the issue of affordable rental. That makes, you know, the just, it's going to cut in to the most and only affordable rental. We have in Oak Bay, that is, suites, the majority of short-term rentals are of that type, and the only affordable rentals we have are that type. So, and 160 days makes it at three or four or $500 a night extremely profitable. Business license is only $100. It's just not going to help with any of the affordable rentals that we so desperately need for the people that serve us coffee, and work at the hospital, and work at the municipality. So we've had all these meetings, I'm one of the few people that have attended them. I don't think you've moved it at all in terms of the recommendation, in terms of protecting short-term, protecting affordable rental. And finally, I, I, I know you've spent a lot of time on this, I just don't understand why you're beating yourself up so much when the province is also asking you to restrict them as much as possible. Affordable rental is all we've got. So, we've got very little in this town. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your input, Mr. Taddy. Do we have any other folks who wish to speak to this item, either in the room or online? Seeing none. And, Mr. Taddy, your hand is still up, so I will, I can, I can seek further comment from you in the future, but I'll, I, otherwise I will, there you go, otherwise I will continue to see whether you want further comment. I will bring it back to this table then, for Council.
Proceed.
No, thank you very much, Councilor Braithwaite. Seconded to move, to receive the staff report. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Any opposed? None opposed? Then I will seek a motion from council.
I'll try a motion. Mine's a little bit of a, it's a little bit different, but I'm looking mainly at option C. So my motion would be that council direct staff to draft short-term rental bylaw amendments based on the option C package, limiting STRs used to principal residences for up to 90 nights per year, requiring business license, proof of residency, safety compliance, and an enforcement framework aligned with the municipal ticketing bylaw.
Do I have a second, or seconded, Councilor Green? Councilor Braithwaite, can I just get you to read that back one more time?
Sure. That council direct staff to draft short-term rental bylaw amendments based on the option C, and I'm just calling it option C plus package, limiting STR use to principal residences for up to 90 nights per year, requiring business licensing, proof of residency, safety compliance, and an enforcement framework aligned with the municipal ticketing bylaw.
Thank you very much, Councilor Braithwaite. Do you wish to motivate?
Sure, thank you. I, I appreciate the work that's come back on this. I find option C, I just found a little bit limiting with the 30 days, but then that's why I asked to increase that to 90 days. But I have, I think we have to remember that our responsibility is to protect our long-term housing and community stability first. Short-term rentals can offer flexibility for rent, for residents, but Oak Bay's character and livability depends on homes being homes, not mini hotels. I support allowing only principal resident-based short-term rentals capped at a reasonable number of nights with strong enforcement and accountability. And, and really, our goal is to find balance, so allowing homeowners to occasionally rent their homes while protecting housing supply and our community livability. And so I think that this might be a, a good balance between that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Braithwaite. Councilor Green, to speak to the motion?
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I will support this motion, and the reason I will, I actually agree with Mr. Taddy. It has been a concern of mine for some time that we are going to compromise the very thing that this housing legislation wants us to do, Bill 44, and that is find affordable, or at least attainable, housing for people in our community. And if we go with either of the other options, we will be threatening that. And so it's antithetical to me to adopt an option that would threaten our, our long-term rental housing. I have concerns about enforcement capacity, staff impact, impacts on neighbors regarding parking, the portal hotel tax implications. I don't think that's been fully pursued. The hotel tax in particular, I know that would have a big concern on the tourism committee side of things, to which I'm the liaison. Safety inspections, I think that is important. And then, again, as I said, compromising the availability of long-term rental housing. So I will support this motion, but I, I support it reluctantly to a degree, because even 90 days, that's three months, when suites or primary residences are not available for anything else. So, but I, but I will support the 90 days. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Green. Councilor Smart?
Thank you. I might possibly be supportive of the motion, but I'm wondering if we can go through it on the chart line by line, just to make sure that I under, or could I get a text copy of it? I'm just, or could we do amendments? I'm just, I'm not sure I understand the motion, because there is some complexity to this issue, and so I have a variety of questions. I guess the first one is, since we're looking at option C through, through you, Chair, potentially to, to staff, why does it say under rental units landlord endorsement not applicable versus not needed, when it, but they both say at this chart, okay, so then what is the difference between only primary dwelling unit and primary dwelling unit? So that means that somebody who lives in a, a suite but rents their house could not rent? Is, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
I'm looking for a clarification of the staff, Councilor Smart. Councilor Bowle, is the question relatively clear?
Thank you, through the chair. That, that particular... That particular comment is specific to secondary suites and detached accessory dwelling units, which in option C are not eligible for short-term rental. But you're right, councilors are right, that the primary dwelling unit could be a rented unit, and I don't think option C is precluding that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bull.
Thank you. And could I also just ask for clarification on the inspections? What is being asked for? Was it self-reporting, or was it staff doing the inspections? Thank you.
I'm seeking clarification from Council Braithwaite, who made the motion with specific respect to inspections.
Just because I don't have the motion in front of me in text, I'm just wondering the inspections. It sounded like there was a sort of amendment on option C with regards to the inspections, so was that a request for self-reporting, or for our staff to do the inspections?
Go ahead, Council Braithwaite.
For self-reporting.
Go ahead, Council Smart?
Thank you. And then, just to clarify again with regards to license fee, was it maintaining the $50 home occupation license fee, or having the commercial $100 fee, or different? Thank you.
Go ahead, Council Braithwaite.
I would say the commercial $100 fee.
Thank you, Council Braithwaite. Council Smart, did you wish to speak to the motion on the floor?
Thank you. I think that answers all of my questions. Thank you for your patience. I do have comments when time comes for that.
Council Watson?
Thank you. I will speak to the motion. I won't be supporting that. I would personally prefer to see option B with 90 days. I think when we had our last discussion about this package, which gets very complex very quickly, we went back to staff and said, this is, it's almost too convoluted to figure out what all the possibilities can be about how people live their lives in various units on the property. And I like option B with a way shorter length at 90 days, because it doesn't discriminate between tenants and owners. And we talked about scenarios in which tenants could quite legitimately need to leave for the summer to go take a job somewhere else, and come back to continue their studies in the fall. And I don't believe that they should be prejudiced because of that unfairly. I think 90 days as a total amount per year doesn't disrupt the underlying use of those premises as more permanent housing, and I think it just gets to be really complicated to try and monitor all these different things if we move to option C. There may well be situations where the owners of the property don't want to be in the primary dwelling, they actually want to be in the ADU, and we've suddenly then taken away their opportunity to do a short-term rental. So, I think C is too complicated still, although I do like the idea of definitely shortening the time. I think 160 is, does actually get into that issue of undermining some of what we've been trying hard to do to maintain stability. So, I think it's, I don't think that what's being proposed right now is quite the right balance between allowing people to do certain things in their homes, to give them some financial flexibility, versus the impact on the community, the impact on the rental stock. So, I won't support what's put forward at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Watson. Mayor Murdock?
Thank you, through you, Chair. I was gonna speak against the motion, but in fact, it actually does hit pretty much everything I was wanting, because it moves a lot of things I was thinking into, that are in B into C. But I'm gonna just test a motion to amend, because I share Council Watson's opinion that I think there should be some mechanism by which ADUs should be rentable. And so, I'm gonna make a motion to amend this motion to allow secondary suite and detached ADUs to be included and by owner. So, if there's a second or I'll speak to it.
Seconded? Go ahead, Mayor Murdock.
So, what this amendment would do, it would allow for secondary suite and detached ADUs to be included. I share Council Watson's comments that there's some complexity in worrying about where those days are fitting. I do think, though, and the scenario that came up in conversation at the last time we talked about this was scenarios where people might be interested in having a secondary suite rented out to university students for the eight months of the year that the students are in school, but during the summer months may be able to rent it out for other purposes for short-term rentals. I don't, I think, given the 90-day scenario, and that is a very realistic opportunity, I think, for people who may not be able to provide affordable rental units for students, but may be able to if they're able to rent them out for short-term rentals for part of the year. So, I think the balance there is reasonable. I think that's, the 90 days would incent them to be used all the time as to short-term rentals, but would allow for that. So, you note that I said yes by owner, I think it should be clear in that case that that's, so it's not just the tenant renting it out as they see fit, but just giving the opportunity for owners as an incentive for them to be able to support an ADU.
Thank you, Mayor Murdock. So, just for clarity, the amendment to the motion on the floor is with specific reference to secondary suite and detached ADUs, and the proposal is to amend to make those rentable, those secondary suites and detached ADUs rentable by the owner. Thank you. I will let Councilor Smart speak to that, as she seconded it, and then to Council Patterson.
Thank you. I'm supporting this because I have heard so many stories about unique situations, and I want to allow those to continue to happen. And I just had one question for them. We were just to clarify my assumption that we're still talking about maximum of one unit with this motion. Thank you.
Mayor Murdock? Seeing yes. Very good. Thank you, Council Smart. Council Patterson? And we're speaking to the amendment at this time.
Thank you, Chair. And yes, I will not support the amendment as it's put forward. I do support what Council Braithwaite put forward. And when I look at this, I, you know, in trying to be everything to everyone on this, we still get into a risk of financialization of housing in the community. And as our speaker, Mr. Taddy, did say, I think, you know, that has to be the overriding premise that I am basing my opinion on. So, I did some surfing today to check out what these were going for in Oak Bay, and the range of the vacation rentals in Oak Bay ranged from a low of $130 a night to $1,500 a night. And at 90 days, then, the average was about $300. At 90 days, the range of profitability on these properties is $11,700 to $142,000 a year. The average is $27,000 a year. And so, at 27 a year, I think you're still pushing the envelope as to whether you decide to rent something as a long-term or a short-term undertaking. And with multiples on the property, it becomes more complex to track it, more complex to enforce it, and I think we're just heading down that path of financialization of properties in Oak Bay. And while there's a desire to support existing homeowners, I think that we have to focus our attention on providing long-term rental units for members of the community that need that type of housing. So, I won't support the amendment, although I certainly, option C that Council Braithwaite put forward, with the increase of up to 90 days, at least it gets to that kind of break of $27,000 a year, so that is perhaps doable, and it's still, still kind of financialization of the market at that. So, I won't be supporting the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Patterson. Council Braithwaite, speaking to the amendment, please.
Thank you so much. I'm struggling with this a little bit. I'm leaning, I think, towards supporting it, but only because it has to be by the owner, not the renter of that secondary suite. And just to clarify, it's a secondary suite, and if there's also an accessory dwelling unit on there, Mayor Murdock, you're saying that each one of those units, so in essence, the primary residence, the secondary suite, and the accessory dwelling unit all could have 90 days rental, so really, or you're just saying one of them?
I think that under option C, the maximum amount of short-term rentals per property is one, Council Braithwaite.
Thank you so much.
So, I think that I'm seeing affirmation from Mayor Murdock, so thank you. Anything further, Council Braithwaite? Any other discussion on the amendment? So, the amendment, just for clarification, is to make secondary suite and detached ADUs rentable by the owner specifically. And again, option C retains the specification for number of short-term rentals per property at one. So, this is the vote on the amendment. Council Smart, your mic's on. Anything further? Then I will call the question on the amendment. All in favor? Any opposed? Council Patterson and Council Green opposed? That passes. Thank you very much. Return to the main motion on the floor. Council Smart?
I'd like to put forward another amendment, and it would be an amendment to limit the number of nights, calendar year, per dwelling unit to 60.
So, the motion on the floor has already amended option C from 30 to 90, so the motion on the floor is, so we would effectively be amending back to 60 days, is what you're specifying. Is there a second or for that motion? Right now, the motion on the floor proposes to amend from 30 days to 90 days under option C. The amendment is to amend further to 60 days. Is there a second or?
Yes, Chair, I will second it for discussion, because I'm interested for the background rationale on this.
Okay, so the amendment is under the number of nights per calendar year, from 90 days as proposed to 60. If you wish to motivate, Council Smart?
Yes, thank you. This is a very complex issue that we're all grappling with, and what I love hearing around the table is how values aligned we are with all of this. We want to create some more flexibility and affordability for our neighbors, but we also absolutely do not want to get in the way of housing and housing affordability, and having the tipping point happen where someone says, oh, it's easier to do a short-term rental for three months than it is, because I can make the same amount of money in three months as I could make all year doing a long-term rental. And I am much more comfortable with a two-month period, a 60-day period, to know and to feel assurance that that wouldn't tip the balance of somebody deciding to not rent their suite, but it still gives some flexibility to those that are renting to students, still gives flexibility to those who want to STR when they go on vacation. But it limits and absolutely does not, you know, put at risk what I see is a tipping point around that 90 days to potentially have somebody not do a long-term rental.
Council Patterson, did you wish to speak to that?
Yes, having listened to Council Smart, I will continue to support that, because I think that it comes closer to my intent of trying to limit the income as a way to ensure that what could potentially be long-term rental is not held off the market because of the profitability of the short-term rental.
Thank you, Council Patterson. Any other further debate on the amendment motion, Council Watson?
Yes, I won't support that. I think 90 days is a reasonable place to start, and we have the opportunity to change that when we have some data in the future. I think that at 90 days, that would allow a homeowner to actually find somebody to come and live in their house and take care of it for three months while they go off to Europe or take a special holiday. And I think we're trying to get into the heads of too many different situations that we can't predict, and I don't think 90 days is unreasonable when you're talking about one property on a site that may actually have three dwelling units. So, I would prefer to stay a little bit more liberal at the moment, and then see what happens.
Thank you, Council Watson. Mayor Murdock, please.
Through you, Chair, if I could just ask a question of a consultant, because I know the 90 days was, came out of the recommendation to the other jurisdictions. Can I just ask of the consultant sort of where that number came from, whether the jurisdictions are using 90 days, and if there's any logic, specific logic to the 90-day that was in the original?
Ms. Reynolds, please go ahead.
Sure. So, the 90 days was considered originally thinking of some of the concerns that were expressed in terms of trying to balance the long-term rentals versus short-term rentals. And I mean, quickly, I would have to just take a look as far as what other jurisdictions are doing, because I don't remember that off the top of my head, but there's certainly, let's see, I mean, Victoria is 160 days, and I know that was probably one of the longer periods, but yeah, I don't have in front of me what some of the other jurisdictions are doing in terms of length of time.
Okay.
But certainly, the provincial regulation allows for, you know, it's, the provincial says less than 90 consecutive days, or that's consecutive days, or another prescribed period. And...
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't have any strong feelings on this one. I struggled with what the right number of days was the whole time. I thought 160 was too long. I thought 90 was probably a reasonable compromise, but I'm, I don't, I'm not sure where I'm gonna go on this one when it comes to the 60. I think we're probably, we're guessing a little bit on this one. I guess where I may be supportive of it is just, it seems easier to add days to our, than it does to take them away in future, so I'm kind of probably maybe leaning a bit that way, but go ahead, other speakers.
Thank you, Mayor Murdock. Any other speakers to the motion to amend? The amendment at the moment is, to amend from 90 days to 60 days. Council Braithwaite?
Yeah, I struggle with this as well, because I thought 90 was a reasonable balance, but I think the mayor is correct, that it's easier to go increase rather than decrease, because it's harder to take something away from someone if we've given them 90, and then we say no, now we've changed our mind at 60. So, yeah, it would be, it's interesting.
Thank you, Council Braithwaite. Council Green, please.
We live in interesting times, wasn't that the opening speech at UBCM? I will support the amendment for 60 days, I appreciate that. I've listened to everyone, but I think that's a good compromise, and I agree that it's easier to add capacity than reduce it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council Green. Seeing no further comments, I will call the question on the motion to amend from 90 days to 60 days. All those in favor? And any opposed? Council Watson and Mayor Murdock opposed? That passes. Oh, okay. Council Watson opposed, Mayor Murdock in favor. So, that amendment passes, so we return now to the main motion on the floor. So, just a reminder that as amended, we're talking about option C, as amended twice, so under the secondary suite and detached ADU portion, there is an amendment that is passed to make secondary suites and detached ADUs rentable by owner. Under the number of nights, calendar year is now 60 days rather than 30 as laid out initially. Again, number of STRs per property remains at one. As per the original motion, inspections is self-reporting, business license required with a fee of $100, was what I understood from the motion on the floor. That is the motion as twice amended on the floor. Do we have any further discussion on that point? I appreciate all of the debate and all the discussion on this matter. Council Green?
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just have one question through you to staff. Would it be possible to review the status of this bylaw if it should pass tonight? Would it be possible in six months' time, or 12 months' time, for it to come back, and then we can learn, have more information about enforcement, about capacity, and that kind of thing? Would that be possible? Thank you.
Thank you, Council Green. Mr. Bull?
Yeah, thank you, through the Chair. That's something that the council could add to either to this motion or separately later this meeting, and it would be something we can follow up on in six months or 12 months. Thank you.
So, Council, thank you, Mr. Bull. So, Council Green, if that was, that would be potentially a motion arising from this motion, a recommendation to council, seeing as how we're at committee, that would be a follow-up recommendation to council to ask for such a review?
Thank you, Chair, and I'll wait until you call the vote on this one, and then I'll try a motion arising.
Thank you very much, Council Green. So, the main motion on the floor is amended as I've described. Anything further? Then I will call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed? Thank you very much. Council Green, please go ahead.
Thank you. This is the motion arising from the last mo- This is the motion arising from the last motion, and this refers to a follow-up review of the bylaw itself as it is enacted. So, I'm sorry, I don't have the wording in front of me, but if, something to the effect that if staff could bring back, bring this back to us as a report in twelve months' time, just, you know, as a check and just see how we're doing and, you know, whether or not capacity is an issue in terms of days and so on, so, but also enforcement and that kind of thing, and if there are any issues or problems that you have encountered that need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Green. And moved and seconded, so I would suggest that we're talking about a program review at twelve months of the implementation of the short-term rentals program. Mayor Murdock, please.
I'm just going to ask to move in second here. I might suggest eighteen months to just for a report back. Where a year from now was right, it's going to be smacked up in the middle of a election season, no council in there, whether it's getting sworn in, it's going to want to be looking at reviews of this, so probably a little bit longer timeframe that makes sense. Just a suggestion for the motion to make it eighteen months instead of twelve.
Suggestion accepted.
Okay, so the motion would be a program review at eighteen months? And seconder is okay with that? Very good. Any, oh, go ahead, Mayor Murdock.
Just for, I think, just to be helpful, I think the staffs understand what that is. I mean, I would expect like a one-pager, here's the number, here's the impact, not a big report on everything, just sort of a quick update in terms of how it's going and if there's any sort of flags being raised. I think if, I'm supportive if that's that kind of level of return, not a...
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Murdock. I'll just ask staff to confirm, but I think staff got the gist of that. Mr. Bull, are you comfortable with what's being put in front of, with what's being requested and what format that would be? That would be yes. I'm hearing yes. Thank you very much, Mayor Murdock, for specifying. Any other further discussion on the motion arising? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed? Any other? I think Counselor Smart, you had two things. One, I think, was answered with respect to the MRDT revenue, but one other component that you wish to add? Please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. And perhaps through you, Chair, just for further clarification, because I feel like I heard two different answers around the, that the OAP MRDT money comes to the district, but it sounded to me in another part of the meeting like, but that it goes to the tourism and not to affordable housing. So, if I, could I just have the correct understanding that the OAP MRDT money currently goes to tourism?
I believe that is, that is correct, so I was confirmed with staff. I think the council liaisons are also confirming that's the case, but is that the case, Mr. Bull?
Thank you. Yeah, I probably can't answer that question because I'm not sure how that works with finance and how the tourism organization works with the district.
Ms. Hunt, thank you.
Thank you very much, through the chair. Yes, the MRDT is required to be spent on tourism-related activities, not affordable housing.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hunt. Sorry, my attention was in this direction. Go ahead, Counselor Smart.
Thank you. If I could, through you, Chair, then to staff, just clarify, I believe it said in the report that there's an option for the OAP MRDT money to be used for affordable housing. Could staff just confirm that in the report? Thank you.
That could be for you, Mr. Bull.
Thank you. That is indeed the case, so it's an option that municipalities have to take this portion, this specific portion of MRDT revenue to apply to affordable housing. We haven't looked into the detailed mechanics of that, but that is something that was an intended option that the province made available. Thank you.
If I could just make a follow-up question then to you, Mr. Bull. In the case that council would be interested in entertaining a change to that, that would not best be a motion arising in this case, but probably something that would be a stand, would best be situated as a standalone motion so that staff could do some analysis as to the implications of how that would roll out. Ms. Hunt?
Yes, to the chair, I believe that we would need to do some analysis on that to determine exactly how those funds would support affordable housing as we're looking at doing an affordable housing strategy. I think it would tie in with that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hunt. Counselor Smart?
Thank you. Hearing that, that leads to my motion, which is to ask staff to return to council with a report on the impacts of reserving the OAP MRDT money for affordable housing.
I will seek, I'm not seeing any huge red flags going up, I will seek a seconder for that motion. I will second for discussion. Go ahead, Mayor Murdock. Yeah, well, you can speak to the motion, Counselor Smart.
As we all talked about during this meeting and grappling with this, this whole issue, it's been expressed at this council table by many of us how important it is that we make earnest efforts towards affordable housing and the challenges that we go through to make meaningful change. We see in the report that it's less than ten percent of what tourism receives right now. That may increase, and I think it's a moment in which, as we are looking at a change in allowing these short-term rentals, I think it's important that we look at what amount of money that is and potentially if it would be meaningful for us to collect it for affordable housing. I just think to carry on as usual when we've made a change like this, I think there should be a touch point that comes up, and it may make sense to do that in six months or a year down the road, but I really think it's important that we look at what amount of money that we're collecting specifically just for the online accommodation program, MRDT, to look if it can actually be a meaningful amount of money that we can leverage to create affordable housing in our community.
Thank you, Counselor Smart. I have Mayor Murdock, Braithwaite, Patterson, Green.
Yeah, very quickly, I guess, I mean, I'm supportive of the intent of this. I kind of think it's okay for this to wait until the report comes back in eighteen months, and we have some sense. If it's seven thousand dollars a year or something we're receiving and the cost of maintaining a separate fund is, I just, I think I'd like some context of how much this is before we get a report back, and I think we may need to wait a bit. So, I'd probably feel a bit more comfortable, this is just sort of, we ask this of the staff to include sort of, or consider that as part of that next step. I'm just going to have no idea of what this, if this is worthwhile or not, because it just may be such a small amount of money, it may not be worth the hassle of managing it, but, so that's kind of where I'm coming out from this. I'm supportive of the intent of this, but I think it could probably wait until that report comes back to give that direction, just we'd have a bit more sense of scale.
Thank you, Mayor Murdock. Counselor Braithwaite?
Yeah, I would agree with those comments. I think that to do that right now, it would not, would not be the smartest thing for us to do because I don't know how much we're going to be getting, and I also don't, if it's a small amount, I think that it should be going to the Tourism Committee to be able to promote tourism within our region as well. So, I would prefer to wait until after we've had a report back after eighteen months to see how much this actually is.
Thank you, Counselor Braithwaite. Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Chair, and through you. I will just perhaps remind my colleagues around this table, the last time we were discussing this, I put forward a motion that was passed by council to have the MRDT tax reporting done annually in our annual report as a line item to that report for what we are getting because for the twenty-one units in Oak Bay that are reporting on this, the, it was such a small amount that the funds were actually better used by the Tourism Committee than gathering that small. But I did request that, and it was passed, so I presume that that reporting will be done in the annual report. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. Counselor Green?
Thank you. I appreciate the sentiment behind this suggestion as well, but I believe we owe the Oak Bay Tourism Committee the courtesy of at least a conversation about it and a discussion. And remember that the local tourism activity in Oak Bay is a huge economic driver for the scale of how big Oak Bay is, so there is another benefit to our community in a very different way that may impact also housing in a more positive way, so I think we have to be careful. And I agree that, I think, with Mayor Murdock, that we could wait on this, but in the meantime, I think we, out of courtesy, I would want to have that conversation with the chair of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Green. Counselor Watson? Anything further? Go ahead, Counselor Smart.
Thank you. Hearing the discussion around the table, can I amend my own motion?
I suppose you can. You can also choose to, like I said, there's also the option to withdraw and present it as a separate standalone motion in response to some of the commentary here, so it's up to you.
Thank you. Should the seconder agree with it, I would just like to modify the motion to ask staff to include in the report in eighteen months the impacts of potentially reserving the OAP MRDT money for affordable housing.
Moved and seconded, so that's a modification to the original to essentially include a broad analysis, I guess, of the funding levels and the impact of the MRDT revenue as assessed in that eighteen months, in that eighteen-month period. So, essentially, what I have heard around this table is an interest in assessing the impact and the, and essentially the quantity of that MRDT revenue and whether or not it does better to be applied to the, in the tourism, the existing tourism avenue or to a potential affordable housing avenue, so. Very good. And the seconder is in approval? Any other further discussion that is amended? So, not a report at this time, but additional information requested as part of the eighteen-month update. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? None opposed? Anything further on this matter? Counselor Smart?
Thank you. I wanted to put forward a motion to ask staff to implement a five-hundred-dollar security deposit for bylaw enforcement related to STRs.
Just as per my earlier clarification, this was not an option that was presented as one of the options in the report, so this is a bit of a standalone component. So, the motion is to implement a five-hundred-dollar damage deposit as part of project implementation. Do you have a seconder?
I'll second. I'll second for discussion.
Seconding for discussion. You may motivate, Counselor Smart.
Thank you. I appreciated the level of detail in this report, looking at what other municipalities are doing. I thought this was an innovative idea and that Michozen had taken on, and I guess what I particularly liked about it is that I think it would just really encourage better behavior if people felt that they had made a security deposit and didn't want to have that used up by bylaw enforcement. And so, I just thought it was a gentle way of encouraging people to be sort of more diligent of what was going on at their properties.
Thank you, Counselor Smart. I will just, I will take a second and just ask a quick question of staff. Are there significant resourcing implications to implementing such a scheme, Mr. Bull?
Thank you, Chair. Through you, I think that could be included in the application process of getting the license in place. There's lots of other permits that require deposits for different reasons, so it would be something that could be, could be added to the package. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bull. As a seconder, did you wish to speak to that? Counselor Braithwaite? Counselor Watson?
Yes, I actually have a question for staff. I wonder if, I'm curious to know if it's actually legal to do this. It's like asking certain people to pay for bylaw enforcement and not others. Bylaw enforcement is available to the entire community, so targeting people who are applying for this particular permit and asking them to pay for some service that may not ever apply to their property seems a little off to me, and I would, if we were going to proceed on this front, I'd want some legal advice on this. Just because Michozen's done it doesn't mean to say we should be doing it. I'm a little uncomfortable with the whole idea.
Mr. Bull, that may be a question for you or potentially for Ms. Reynolds in terms of analysis of other jurisdictions. Oh, sorry, just for clarification, I guess it could be one of the, one or the other of you, Mr. Bull or Ms. Reynolds, can you speak to sort of the, I guess, the legality or the enforceability of that five-hundred-dollar deposit that Michozen has used?
I can try to respond. I mean, I think it's, you know, local governments have the authority to collect on security deposits for various reasons, for fulfilling certain activities, and I think this is similar to that in that an applicant for their business license, they're confirming that they're fulfilling cer, they're confirming that they're going to meet all the conditions of the business license, and if they don't, then they would be subject to the security deposit being retained in full or in part, depending on the extent of the noncompliance. So, similar, I suppose, just looking at, thinking about a landscape deposit that's collected to ensure that the work gets done, and if it doesn't get done, then it gives the local government the ability to go in and get the work to pay for that landscaping to be done.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Anything further to add, Mr. Bull?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I want to acknowledge that it is, would be a different type of use of deposit than we have used so far in the district, so if this is something that council would like to add, we'll definitely double-check that this can be done in proper ways and make sure that we do, use the right tools for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bull. Further discussion on the point? Mayor Murdock?
Yeah, thank you, through you, Chair. Just very briefly, I'm not going to support the motion. I think, I understand, I think, where it's coming from, but I also think there's a benefit to allowing the online platforms that manage this to kind of essentially manage their business and us getting in there and preemptively doing it. It just seems to be adding a bit of complexity and frankly, a bit of a barrier. There may be times people just want to rent for one weekend or something in a year and to have to put down a five-hundred-dollar deposit and go through that process. Doesn't seem like that's the right course of action. I think we have a life business license, we have their agreement to make sure health and safety are taken care of, and everything else are really stepping out of the way of the platform, so I just can't, it just seems more complexity than I'm comfortable with on this, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Murdock. Counselor Patterson?
Yes, thank you, Chair, and through you. I certainly appreciate the intent of the motion, but I will not support it. I think when the, when the reporting does come back on the entire program, we will be better able to assess any costs that the district is absorbing because of this program, and at that time, then we can take the appropriate measures to determine next steps as, once we've ascertained if there is in fact a problem or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. Counselor Smart?
Thank you. I appreciate hearing all my colleagues' perspectives around the table, and I'm happy to, based on hearing what everyone had to say, withdraw the motion if the seconder is fine with that.
Thank you, Counselor Smart. I think that the discussion has revealed that there may be some merit to such a scheme or such a program, but pending the analysis of implementation of the, of what is proposed, it may be difficult to assess how successful that might be, so I appreciate the suggestion and I appreciate the debate. Anything for, that motion is withdrawn? Anything further on this point? That concludes Section 6.1, and I appreciate the discussion around that, and thank you, Ms. Reynolds, for your attendance here. We're moving on to Item 7, which is new business. I am not aware of any new business. I am also not aware of any notices of motion. Does anybody have a notice of motion they wish to bring forward? Then I will seek a motion to adjourn. Any, all in favor? Any opposed? Not opposed. We will recess for about five minutes while we switch over to the special council meeting, so we will reconvene at eight fifty-five. Thank you very much.